Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Welcome to the informational meeting here, Tuesday, February 22, 2022. First off, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And the second agenda item is a committee report. The Multicultural Center for the Board of Directors, Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things. What was really exciting to see is the Multicultural Center has partnered with the Sioux Falls Health Department and have antigen home COVID tests available and are actually explaining how they work. And so as part of that partnership with the Health Department, spreading it to all parts of our community. This past weekend, a really exciting event that they started was a fair market pop-up grocery store. Over 200 people purchased groceries and they gave away over 450 pounds of ham from Smithfield. There's also an event coming up to teach kids about, it's, the event is called Let's Have a Ball, and it's for kids nine to 15 years old. Just the basics of learning to play basketball, volleyball, soccer, and of course, dance. But to get people to understand enough about those games to join leagues and participate in the community and those type of things. The board itself is spending some time wrapping up year-end financials. And of course, moving along the road of hiring a new executive director as the contract runs out for our interim executive director. So lots of things happening, lots of good events and a lot of good activities that the organization is doing. So, thank you.
Thank you for the report. Next, we'll go to council remarks. Are there any council remarks? Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to our presentations for today. We have our internal audit manager here for three very dynamic presentations. So we'll start with Spectra Agreement Audit. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have three audit reports to present today. And the first one I'd like to present is the contract compliance audit of the Food and Beverage Services Agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and the Ovation Food Services. They're also doing business as Spectra, so from here forward, I will refer to Ovation's as Spectra. Agreement 174173 was established to provide food, beverages, novelty, and merchandise concession services and catering for the following facilities: the Sioux Falls Arena, the Sioux Falls Convention Center, the Orpheum Theater, the Denny Sanford Premier Center, and the Sioux Falls Baseball Stadium. This agreement was in effect from July 1 of 2019 through this year, December 31 of 2022. I'd also like to note that effective July 1, services provided to the Orpheum Theater were re-contracted with the Washington Pavilion. The objectives of this audit was to verify compliance with major requirements of the agreement, focusing on insurance coverage, the independent audit of gross receipts and commissions, their operating account, and reporting requirements. The other objectives are to determine if the city and ASM Global, which is also known as SMG, our facility management company, if there are proper internal controls in place to ensure that Spectra is compliant with the agreement. And based on contract compliance, this is what we had found. Under insurance requirements, it states that insurance renewals are to be provided to the city and facilities manager at least 45 days prior to expiration. There was no evidence that Spectra did provide the city and the facility manager with this. However, there was insurance on file. One other finding was Spectra's policy identifies that they have $1 million of automobile coverage when the agreement requires 1.5 million as a coverage. Orpheum Theater insurance, at this time, Spectra's insurance policy has provided still listed Orpheum as an insured even though they were no longer provided services for the facility. An independent audit for the 29, it was noted that the requirement was by May 31, an independent audit of Spectra's gross receipts performed by IBALE was not completed in compliance with the agreement. Additionally, controls over contract compliance by the city administration. Controls that were provided was included with a checklist that was not completed by management. Insurance documents on file were expired. Proof of the performance bond was not in file. Proof of property insurance was not on file, and contract amendments were not on file. Controls over contract compliance by ASM. There is a lack of thorough documentation and monitoring activities resulting in unmet contract requirements. There were four recommendations from this audit. Recommendation one is, we recommend Spectra develop and implement procedures to ensure compliance is maintained throughout the terms of the agreement. We also recommend Spectra provide updated insurance documents reflecting the correct locations and services and procure and maintain the correct amount of business automobile coverage required by the agreement. We also recommend city management develop a citywide written internal policy and procedure to strengthen the current controls over contract compliance, define the contract administration and monitoring practices, ensure contract requirements are obtained before execution of work, and address contract amendments and renewals. We also recommend ASM develop record-keeping standard operating procedures that will strengthen the monitoring process to ensure Spectra's compliance to the agreement. We also noted opportunities. And that was with the recommendation at the expiration of this agreement, a thorough review of the succeeding agreement is imperative to eliminate mistakes and inconsistencies within the agreement. On here are two identifications of where it was inconsistent. The agreement states that Spectra is to maintain 2,500 place settings, but Exhibit B states that the need to increase the number of place settings from 2,000 to 3,000. Another section of the agreement incorrectly states that December 31 of 2020 is the agreement termination date. In conclusion, based on our review, we believe that city, the city and ASM have various procedures in place but have room for improvement to strengthen the current controls to ensure Spectra is compliant with the contract requirements. Our recommendations and opportunities for improvement will provide additional assurance that Spectra will continue to be compliant with the various aspects of the contracts. And again, we would like to thank everyone from the city, including the Finance Office, ASM, and Spectra for their cooperation and assistance during this audit.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Starr.
Well, I guess I'm confused. What are we supposed to do with this? I mean, how do we know that it follows up? How do we know that the opportunities are there? I mean, have they been addressed? Usually, I guess in the past reports, it's, there's been a response from management or... I don't have a copy of the actual audit of that's there. Has there been a response from management?
Yes.
And the administration?
Yes, it's all attached to the meeting. The one-page management executive report as well as the full report.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Brecky. Could you turn your mic on?
I'm sorry. If we return to the slide, the one that says what we recommend. You know, first of all, you know, good job. This is a hard thing to do. And you found probably more substance in this audit than I've seen you find before. I mean, you found a lot of things, so that's got to be kind of difficult. And I understand how that happens because a contract versus a department's policies are two different things. And so the details of a contract isn't necessarily assigned to any one person. And so it can happen, you know, like this one apparently did where there's multiple details that, you know, just accidentally aren't being complied with. I don't think there's probably an indication that it was intentional, but that's a lot of stuff that you found. And the question I have is, when you say what we recommend, we recommend management. And is that city management you're talking about?
That's correct, yes.
Develop a citywide written internal policy and procedures? You know, what is the response? Because I think that's really important. Because pretty clear, it makes me say, boy, your next audit should probably dig into contracts a little more. Because if one looks like this, what all the others look like and who's actually watching these things? And I appreciate the list that you've come up with. But that's going to require a lot of extra work for someone, either some position or, you know, maybe there's needs a position to do it. But, I mean, some of these things are really substantial. The one that jumped out at me was the insurance coverage. I mean, they were 1,500,000 dollars short. Well, what if we got a claim in that time? You know, so, you know, then someone who was wronged wouldn't have been able to receive the full benefit unless the city would have kicked it up. So that, you found some very significant things. And what is management's response? Are they going to work on it? They're going to work with you on it? You're going to follow up with it?
Yes. For recommendation number three, the written internal policy and procedures, the response is that they have an expected date of implementation by June 30 of 2022. And as far as the contract compliance is concerned, finance is working on an internal control management policy for major contracts and management agreement compliance. And when appropriate, will include a checklist requirement and an assigned individual responsible for major third-party management contracts and agreements. The policy will also address responsibilities for deliveries within the contract and/or the agreement.
And then I guess the other, you know, recommendations and that could put opportunities. Are you poised to, you know, follow up on these? Are you, do you have a checklist? And then will you report to us? Or can I ask you to report to us when they've completed all of it?
Absolutely. I can tell you the majority of my recommendations have already been implemented to include the updated insurance, the, all of the files on, within the MUNIS document for the insurance renewals as well as the... There was something that you missed. I think it was the performance bond. They've all been updated already and are on the system. As far as ASM, or they have already developed their record-keeping checklist. And as far as follow-ups go on, as soon, we usually give it about six months or within, six months of the audit, we usually do a follow-up audit and then present that to the audit committee as well. We haven't in the past presented follow-ups to informationals, but if it, we can definitely do that.
I think it would be good, just again, because it's substantial, what you found. And again, I don't want to cast any aspersions at anyone. These contracts are 30, 60, 100 pages. It doesn't surprise me and then it does, you know what I mean? But that's what you're here to do. That's what your job is here to do. You find these things. And again, it's not, I'm going to assume these things aren't intentional. I'm going to give people the benefit of the doubt. But the follow-up then becomes really important because that's what we're paying for, so that's what we should get. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the phone? Who's on the phone?
Counselor Kylie is on the phone. And I think Shawna addressed that question very, very well as to who's responsible for the follow-up. And in this case, it is city management that needs to make sure that all of the safeguards are put into place to ensure that the vendor, in this case, Spectra, is following that playbook that's outlined in the contract. But the reality, it's, the responsibility is twofold. It's city management to make sure that the contract is being followed, but then it's also the vendor to make sure that they have everything in place and that they're following the contract as well. So this is just the process to ensure that that takes place. Good job, Shawna.
Thank you. Counselor Neitzler.
Yeah, excuse me. And just to reiterate, audit for a long time, just as a practice, does a follow-up audit a handful of months later to verify that everything has been implemented that they recommended? The, and it's good that there's a recommendation for a citywide written internal policy in terms of contract compliance and how to monitor them. Every department has done it, I think, a little bit, you know, kind of in different ways. And so, for example, Parks has somebody who's assigned to their contracts and they have a checklist. And they've made a lot of improvements in the last few years because they had some issues as well. So they have a very regimented process that I think could be learned from where they go through. And they go through the whole checklist and they do it at a certain time of year so they make sure that everything is... And it was another case where it was certainly no ill intent or anything like that. It's just, it's just the details and making sure that there's somebody that clearly is delegated to do it. So, and finance has a number of contracts, so it's, it'll be really good to make sure those are in place. So, good job. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for that thorough audit. Let's move on to the next Midco Cash Handling Audit Report.
In 2016, Sioux Falls opened its first indoor aquatic center. The multipurpose aquatic center was named after the city signed a tenure agreement naming Midco as the exclusive sponsor for the facility. Revenue at Midco is obtained from daily admission fees, annual pass sales, program registrations, meeting room reservations, and swim lane reservations. Midco is generally open year-round with a calendar full of events for every age group. Here you will find the Midco annual attendance by swim pass, daily admissions, swim meets, lessons, the swim team, a little bit of other, and that's usually concessions mixed in with there. I would like to note that you'll notice that the revenue for the Midco and the daily attendance or admissions is lower in 2020, and that's due to COVID and the Midco being closed from March 13 to June 7. On this slide, you will see the annual revenue by each one of those admission passes, whether it's daily admission swim passes from 2018 through 2020. The objectives of this audit, there were four. One being, are there sufficient segregation of duties? Is cash safely safeguarded? Are cash deposits turned in timely at a secure basis and are accurate? And are policies and procedures current, properly documented, and followed? The scope of this audit was testing during the months, during the 12-month period in 2020. And what we found during our testing, we found the following. Policy and procedures were not being followed completely. 95% of deposits were filled out by the cashiers and not by the manager or the headguard as the policy states. Their RecTrack, which is their software system that does their cash receipting, lacked proper controls for segregation of duties, whereas user roles and permissions should be updated for the best practices. There were shortage of controls in safeguarding cash, and they were out of compliance with finance's billing, cash receipts, and collection policy, like locking drawers or the restricted access to the cash, et cetera. Inconsistent deposit slips were not being filled out. 20% of the deposits tested were missing at least one of the required documentations. As well as finance billing, cash receipts, and collection policy was out of date, meaning it hadn't, there was a significant amount of time that had passed since it was reviewed. Our recommendations for this audit, based on the findings, we have five recommendations. We recommend Midco staff establish a process to regularly monitor the compliance with the Midco Aquatic Center facility deposit procedure and the finance billing, cash receipts, and collections policy to ensure that existing procedures and policies are being followed. Segregation of duties is maintained and proper documentation is retained as required by the procedures. We also recommend an increase in controls added to RecTrack to limit access for users based on segregation of duties and principles of least privileges. Access to process refunds should be removed from cashiers and finance employees. Access to enter transactions should be removed from finance users. If access cannot be removed, we recommend reports of these transactions be ran and reviewed by management regularly. We also recommend additional steps be taken to comply with the finance's billing, cash receipts, and collections policy, which states cash shall be appropriately secured and be kept out of sight from employees and customers. These steps are to include locked cash registers are installed and connected to RecTrack, a lock and badge reader are installed on the doors to access the cashier's area, cash counts are performed away from the front desk and out of sight, and the safes combination being changed on a regular basis. We also recommend Midco staff who fill out deposit slips sign off with their city-assigned employee number. And the reason why is this will be easier to read than the employee signatures, which makes it more reliable way to identify who filled out the slip. And based on the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, we recommend that finance review and monitor and update the billing, cash receipts, and collection policy every other year. This review ensures all departments that the processes, that the process cash aligns with the policy. All policies should be uploaded to the insight when updated so employees can have access to them. We identified two opportunities during this audit as well. We recommend Midco start scanning deposit slips and require documentation and sending them electronically to finance. This will decrease paper usage and mail carrier costs and increase reconciliation efficiency. They could also install hardware to utilize electronic signatures, which will eliminate the need for paper receipts. We also recommend finance to update their credit card signature section of the billing, cash receipts, and collection policy. This section would define the thresholds that each department should follow in regard to receipt signatures to increase transparency. In conclusion, based on our reviews, we determined that several adequate controls exist over cash handling process at the Midco. There was no evidence of fraud, waste, or abuse. The recommendations provided will also help ensure Midco continues to have an effective and efficient cash handling process. And we'd like to thank the Midco staff, Parks Department, and the Finance Department for their assistance during this audit.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Counselor Neitzler.
No question, just maybe a suggestion. So as you did point out, the management's response and status and date of implementation is in the report. But it, and it's hard to maybe put like the whole narrative in there because then the slides get really long. But maybe a potential way to add to the slides could be even having like a status, like completed and date of expected implementation or something like that. Just food for thought because I, you know, I think for counselors, it's important to know that they've been addressed, you know, so... But I understand like some of those narratives get to be a whole paragraph or two.
An entire page at sometimes.
Yeah, so you'd almost have to just print us, and maybe people would prefer that to have a hard copy of the audit report. I don't know, but that might help, just have a quick little eye catcher, you know, complete, 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 you know, so just...
Are there any other questions from the phone?
Mr. Chair, I'll just point out, similar response to what Audit Manager Nelson had stated earlier, that information is available in the attachments to this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for that report. Let's move on to the Travel Expenditure Audit, item C under four.
The Travel Expenditure Audit focuses on employee travel requests, travel expense claims, eligibility of travel expenses, substantiation of expenses, and controls to prevent fraud, waste, and abuse. This travel audit does not include an in-depth review of travel card reallocations, reconciliation, or non-travel reimbursements. The City of Sioux Falls travel policy was established under Executive Order Number 149 and revised March 2019. During this time, the scope of this audit, there were $1,658,822 spent on travel and training combined. $137,000 was paid directly to travelers during travel reimbursements. 47% of these trips were in-state and 53% of the trips that we tested were out of state. What you see here is the top four departments by their travel and training category within the City of Sioux Falls. This shows a little background of each city department and how many travel cards that they obtained during this time of the audit. The travel expenditures are broken down in three general categories for per diem, personal card expenses, city travel card expenses. And at the start of this audit, there were 131 travel cards active. The objective of this audit was to determine the effectiveness of controls for employee travel reimbursements and compliance with city policy and procedures, including whether travel reimbursements contained errors or instances of fraud. During our testing, we identified 10 findings where reimbursements were not in compliance with the city policy and procedures, or there were a lack of segregation of duties and/or policy language was unclear. And this is what we found. Against city travel policy, one reimbursement claim was paid without a travel request. Travel expense reimbursement claims processed without a travel request form. An eligible per diems paid to a traveler resulting in overpayment. It was found immaterial. It was only $6.50. Travel reimbursements processed without a travel reimbursement claim. A reimbursement of a trip over 15% tip. Expense claims were missing required receipts. Travel card expenses on the informational expense tab in MUNIS were not updated and moved to the actual expense column. The missing travel justification form. The city travel policy does not explicitly state the itemized receipts are required for expense reimbursements. Unable to verify compliance with the city travel policy requiring travel reimbursement claim forms be completed and filled in 30 days from the travel end date. And lack of segregation of duties and consistent process to permit fraud and errors in travel expense reimbursements. The following recommendations was for management to create a final review step conducted by an individual other than the travel coordinator entering or processing the claim. This review should be completed prior to posting the AP batch. Currently, there is no secondary reviewer resulting in manual data entry issues, missing required documentation, and non-compliance with the city travel policy creating an opportunity for fraud. We recommend that management provide a refresher training to travel coordinators on how to process travel reimbursement claims annually. We recommend a separate policy be written and implemented to provide direction on reimbursements paid directly to employees while not in travel status. What expenses are eligible, when are tips eligible, and what is appropriate process or procedure for non-travel employee expense reimbursements? The section describing allowable trips in the tips in the city travel policy on page eight does not identify specifically what types of expenses are allowable and provide no additional details. The section of the policy is also meant to provide direction on tips reimbursed directly to employees who are not on a trip and not traveling outside the city. We recommend city travel policy should be amended to explicitly state that reimbursement for expenses incurred on a personal We recommend city travel policy should be amended to explicitly state that reimbursement for expenses incurred on a personal card or city card requires an itemized receipt that details the date and time the expense was incurred and details of the expense to a level of detail that allows the city to ensure the character of the expense was work-related. We recommend management amend the travel reimbursement claim form to require, to create a required submit-to-travel coordinator date field next to the traveler's signature certifying the expense. We also recommend that individual who posts AP batch be a different individual than the person processing and entering the expense claim details in MUNIS. This individual posting the batch could be the same individual who conducts a final review of the claim details to verify accuracy and eligibility as described in recommendation number one. We identified a few opportunities as well. Amending the current travel requests to include a signature and submitted date to be completed by the traveler or travel coordinator. The signature line for the mayor for trips over a thousand should be removed if no longer required. Amend the city travel policy to require an online map screen, including total mileage to either compare to the odometer readings or in place of the odometer reading for personal mileage. We also recommend amending the city travel policy language. From one baggage fee is allowable and payable by the city, additional baggage fees are eligible for reimbursements if required by the employee to perform their designated job duties and preauthorized prior to travel. Based on our review, we believe there are opportunities for improvement to address the effectiveness of controls and compliance of travel expense reimbursements across the city. The recommendations provided are based on leading practices and will provide additional assurance to mitigate the risk of potential fraud in regard to travel expenses and reimbursements. There was no evidence of fraud, waste, or abuse. And we would also like to thank the Finance Department for their assistance provided during this audit.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on this audit? Counselor Selberg.
Thank you. So what was the timeline you're auditing the expenses and that from when to when?
For this, this, the travel went from quarter two of two thousand nineteen to quarter one of two thousand twenty.
Okay.
That twelve-month period.
Okay, gotcha. And from the, by the looks of it, and there's a lot of recommendations, but it doesn't look like overall for a citywide in that that there was much for issues found on that one? Am I seeing correctly, like you found a couple of things here and there once there was something of a tip over fifteen percent, but in general, in an audit like that where there's recommendations, it looked like overall it was pretty almost surprisingly not that much there when you're talking about that much expense and reimbursement maybe?
That's correct.
Might, just having you walk through, am I reading this correctly as you're showing it to me, so? Thank you.
Counselor Neitzler.
Yeah, I guess I just want to point out, since this is our third and final one, it's worthwhile to note that there were three audits, one performed by each of our three different staff members and all were very detailed, so great job by the team. Thanks.
Counselor Kylie, anything from the phones?
Counselor Neitzler just stole my thunder. It is a team effort. Good job was done by everybody. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I will also agree. We're proud of your work that you've done since you've been here and know you'll continue to do that, so thank you very much and reach out anytime you need help. So we will move on to the next agenda item. It'll be public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn.